Twenty twenty-two town of Lake Luzerne, Board of Appeals Meeting. Would you all please rise and cite Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
On this evening's agenda, we have a public.
Mics are on. Sam, can you hear us?
Yes.
We're all set?
I believe so.
Okay. This evening's agenda, we have three items. We have a public hearing for Sam Zappas for side yard setback, a new application for Francis Keen, also for side yard setback variance, a decision on area variance two zero two one A V dash six Christopher and Carolyn Charland, one eighty-seven Potash Road, and then new old business. So with that being said, I would like to open the public hearing on area variance two zero two two A V dash one, Sam Zappas, twenty-six Colony Drive, side yard setback variance parcel number two nine eight point one one dash two dash one eight, H R zone point two two acres. Karen, if you would please read the public announcement.
Okay. Before I read the public hearing announcement that went into the paper, I need to tell you there are two things wrong. First of all, I it's done under Samuel Zappas. His name is not Samuel. It's Sam. And I misspelled Zappas, Z A P P O S. It should be Z A P P A S. So, public hearing is. Please take notice that pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Lake Luzerne, the zoning Board of Appeals will conduct a public hearing on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven oh five P M. At their regularly scheduled meeting. The meeting will be held at the municipal complex, five thirty-nine Lake Avenue, Town of Lake Luzerne, to hear comments on the following area variance twenty twenty-two A V dash one applicant owner Samuel Zappas. Should have been Sam. Parcel number two nine eight point eleven dash two dash eighteen Hamlet Residential Zone. And I've got H C. It should be H R there. Point twenty-two acres, location twenty-six Colony Drive, Lake Luzerne. The applicant has applied for variance from the zoning Board of Appeals for relief from Article five, a dimensional table of the zoning ordinance of Lake Luzerne, requiring a side yard setback of a total of thirty feet. The proposed side yard setback is a total of twenty-six feet, two and nine sixteen six inches. He is asking for a variance of three feet, nine and seven sixteenths inches. A copy of the application, as well as other supporting documentation, are in file with the Office of the Zoning Officer, and may be reviewed by interested members of the public during normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, eight thirty A M. To one thirty P M. All parties in interest and citizens will be given an opportunity to be heard in respect to the proposed variance at the public hearing. Persons may respond by letter, appear in person, or by agent, or participate via Zoom. Access Zoom by computer at zoom dot com, or by phone at six four six five five eight eight six five six. The access code is for Zoom is nine oh two six eight seven nine seven six four. Karen Putney, zoning officer, Town of Lake Luzerne, P O Box three seventy-five thirty-nine Lake Avenue, Lake Luzerne, New York, one two eight four six five one eight six nine six two seven one one, extension four, published April fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Mr. Zappas, would you please summarize your variance request?
Well, it was written in the application, but basically we have purchased a property that has five sides to the property. And the proposed construction is consistent with other additions to the homes in the neighborhood. We've worked with a designer, which has downsized the original plan to make sure that we come as close to the setback, proposed setbacks in Lake Luzerne as possible. And basically, we're asking for a requested variance that's less than twenty percent. The construction would be within sort of the ten-foot setback that cannot, we can't use it because the ten-foot setback of the existing structure on the other side. So we're sort of hemmed in by the position of our house on the property. And we're asking for three, three and a half foot variance so that we can build a small addition to three-foot, a ten-inch variance on a tomahawk drive side of the property, which basically encompasses a very small addition to the existing building.
Thank you. Karen, do we have any letters from the public, the state?
I did not receive any comments at all. I had one person called and inquired what the very, what the hearing was about, but left no comment. I have, I have nothing. However, I did receive back two of the letters that went out regarding this as unable to forward, and that's the Freedman Family Revocable Trust and Robert B. McCutcheon. I don't know why. I don't have the right address, apparently. So, no, I have nothing other than that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comment from the public? Would you please?
Please come up to the mic.
Speak, speak directly into the microphone, or it doesn't work. Please, you need to be closer to the microphone.
Suzanne Robbins, a resident of Pine Hill Colony. I am Sam's next door neighbor. He has my blessings to go with.
Thank you. Anything else? With that, I will close the public hearing. And I would ask the board to view with me the application. None of the information from the first page has changed. The last time. Go through that again. Nor is the history. I'd like to go through the variance standards. Question number one, describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Response is, the proposed construction is consistent with other additions to homes in our neighborhood. The architectural style, materials, and color will blend in with the other structures. The variance is toward the side of the property. The other owners cannot use for practical purposes. I have no issues with that response. Having been to the jobs, having been to the site, seen the property, pentagonal shape. Yeah, it's right. The fact that the there is, is property on the other side, anyway. I have no issue. Jamie?
No, it, like you said, it's a very unique shaped lot, and they're maintaining the same single-story level. So it's nothing that's going to intrude on anybody else's view of the lake or anything. And I don't see any issues with answering that question.
I have no issues.
Rayo?
Question answered.
Burgess? Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. Response is, we've worked with a designer and downsized the original plan, yet still had a problem because of the unusual shape of the lot and the placement of the original construction. I am good with that.
Yeah, there was no possible, I answered my own question before, there's a possibility of Mr. Zappas, if he wanted to go higher, add on to the height of the building to add the structure, or just the only way you can go out with that was through the science?
We, we actually contemplated that option, but the puring of the original house would not support the additional weight. And so it would be structurally almost impossible. And we would build a second story that would impede the view of the, our, our neighbors in back of us. They wouldn't be able to see the lake.
Okay, thank you.
Annie?
Question answered.
Rayo?
Happy with it.
Burgess?
Good with that, thank you.
Question number three, explain with us, requested variance is substantial. Requested variance is less than twenty percent. Construction will be within the ten-foot setback. It cannot be used because of the ten-foot setback. Existing structures on the other side. I'm good with that.
I have no issue with that.
No issue.
No issue.
No issue.
Question number four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Existing trees and most shrubs will be preserved, and additional plantings will be used to take up the increased runoff. I'm good.
I'm, I'm fine with that, thank you.
No issue.
Question answered. Agreed, question answered.
Question number five, describe how the requested variance is not a self-created difficulty. Because of the configuration of the existing structure and the elongated pentagonal shape of the lot, there is no other solution except to add a second floor, which the current structure cannot support, and which would block more of the lake view. As with all of these, if you're doing something, meet the requirements. It is a, my position is it is a self-created.
It is self-created, I agree.
I agree.
Rayo?
Everything is solved. Question answered. Agreed.
Does anyone have any other questions?
No, it's just a very neat shaped lot. I can see it's pretty handcuffed on you. What, what you possibly can do with that lot, so. I'm pretty well set.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance.
There's a couple of things I need to address before we get to that. I received back the referral from the county, and they will concur with whatever decision the local board makes. And we received today a copy of the letter from Adirondack Park Agency. This is non-jurisdictional to them. And seeker, as we said in the last meeting, is they are exempt. That's all I have.
Okay.
A second.
Motion to accept, to, what was the motion?
Motion to accept.
Yes.
Seconded by Annie, right?
Correct.
Okay.
You want to call the roll?
Burgess?
Yes.
Rayo?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Matt?
I.
So was that just to accept them, or are you granting them the variance? Is that what the motion was?
That was.
Probably sure worth it, might make the motion to approve.
Okay, to approve the variances. All right, sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the intent of what the motion was. Yes.
I think you just.
Yep. So we're done with that one?
We are, as far as I know.
Okay. Mr. Zappas, we're all set. They've granted you your variance, and your next step will to be to submit your application when you're ready to build, along with construction drawings, and, you know, the complete application, but they have granted you your variance on this.
Okay, well, I would like to thank the board, thank Karen, and I sue. It's my neighbor, our neighbor. So, thank you for your time. Is that it? Do you need us anymore?
No, you're all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And number two on the agenda is a new variance application, application two zero two two A V dash two, Francis Keen, twenty-three Lake Shore Road, side yard setback variance parcel number two nine eight point one six dash one dash six four. Mr. Keen, are you present?
I believe Ethan Hall is here to represent.
Mr. Hoyou representing Mr. Keen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Would you please summarize the application?
Of course. For your reference, my name is Ethan Hall, I'm the principal of, which is what we call architecture in Los Angeles, New York. Here tonight, representing Francis Keen. Projects is the existing building that's on the site is a seasonal residence. They really only use it for the general issue. Frank, his wife are retiring, and he'd like to move here full-time. To do that, they would like to put a wheelhouse on the lot. We investigated, looking at the existing house, and trying to do some work on that. Livable, the foundations are just too far gone at this point. And the additions, the, the location of it just didn't find itself. Also, we're gonna have to set the system in, that's what they have, the camp set of just. So, the, the process is, we redesigned a new house. We have everything that we've been able to meet, with the exception of a total of thirty feet of the two side yards. We need ten feet on both sides, but totally slightly less than thirty.
Again.
I do have a copy of the deed, which I did not include in your packet, but I do have it, if you have any questions.
Okay. There is a lot of information in the packet, the drawings, etc. But as you know, at this meeting, we are reviewing the application for completeness, and as, whether or not to accept the application. On that basis, I would like to go over the application. Make sure we are all in agreement and complete, or if not, what has to be changed. On page one, I've already discussed with Karen, and she has discussed with the county that the no under, is a subject property within five hundred feet of county or state right-of-way park municipal boundary or watershed draining into any county or New York State facility, requiring review of the Warren County Planning Board. The paperwork currently says no, that is being changed to yes.
Let, let me just clarify that, that Matt called this to my attention. He felt that it should be yes. And we read through the requirements in the zoning ordinance, and it states a stream, but anyway, between Matt and I, I decided to call the county planning department and spoke with Wayne Lamoth, who's the director, and he said that technically, it is not required to go to the county for referral, but that because the question was raised, because it's near water on the lakefront, just as a precaution to send it on to the county for re, for review. And that way, if there's ever any question, Article seventy-eight or whatever on the file, then we will have at least covered that base and, and done it, and it would not be something that would come back to affect us in any way. So I did send it on to them today. They should have it back to me by our next meeting. But it technically, according to the director, it was not required. The, let me, the, the county has a program on their G I S site for the zoning officials to use, where you put in the tax map number, and they pro, they run it through a process, and it tells you whether you need to refer it to them or not, and I had done that, and it had come back, no referral required. So, you may use that as well. I don't know if that's how you do it. Yeah.
Comes back, no referral required. Technically, it's not needed.
Because it, the way it's worded, let me find it for you.
Since I, since I raised the question, it's, it's.
Okay.
It's in the variance application. Quite, is a subject property within five hundred feet of a county or state right-of-way? No. Park, no. Municipal boundary, no. Or watershed draining into any county or New York State facility. This property is, is on the lake. The lake drains into the river. The river is a county watershed. Yeah, so.
I can see, I can see the conclusion.
And, and we have used that in the past. That is, that has been our position. No, I understand.
The county has a program or something in place.
I, I think that's from what Karen has told me, that the county's program does not take into the watershed, taking into account the watershed.
I don't know. I, when I talked to Wayne Lamoth, he said that if they reviewed every single variance that was on water, that they would be inundated, and they couldn't not keep up because there are so many lakes and streams and rivers within Warren County. And so they basically don't do it for those parcels unless it's directly in a known watershed area.
So that was.
If it's a direct tributary.
Right.
We were on, if we were over on the river, and that's a direct tributary right into the river. This is the secondary, you know, it's a secondary tributary to the lake, eventually to the river. They usually disconnect that. That's, that's been the, that's been the determination I got. That's why.
It, it really won't.
It doesn't change anything.
And again, I'm, I'm fine with, with changing that, yes.
I'm assuming that the applicant name and address information, all that is correct. I have no way of verifying that without the applicant.
Yes.
Frank, Frank signed it.
The history of the property, the existing building is used as a seasonal residence. It's been in the Keon Corbo family for many years, and it's been used as a seasonal residence historically. Their intent is to construct a year-round residence in the property. Description of the proposed action, the new single-family residence will meet all zoning requirements, except for the sum of the side yard setback requirement, where a total side yard or thirty point thirty feet, zero inches is required. Twenty-two feet, three inches is being provided. Seven point nine, seven feet, nine inches of relief is sought from the thirty foot, zero inch requirement. The new co-compliance sewage disposal system is being provided on the lot, and the existing seasonal residence will be removed. Is that total demolition?
Yes.
Foundation, etc. If there is a foundation. Bearing standards, question number one, describe how the requested grants will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact adjacent properties. Response is, requested variance is moderate, and the minimum side yard of ten feet, zero inches is provided on both sides of the proposed residence. Question is answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered.
Questions answered. Questions answered.
Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than a variance. Response, we looked at turning the garage, and it was at ninety degrees to the residence, but that would mean that the garage doors would face the street directly, which may cause undesirable drainage issues, and a side load garage at ninety degrees would interfere with the proposed, proposed septic system. Question is answered.
Questions answered.
Answered.
Question number three, explain whether this requested variance is substantial. Really, it's sort of moderate and the minimum necessary. Question is answered.
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 Question number four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The variance will not change the neighborhood, and there is a residence on that site now, and the new residence will improve the environmental character of the installation, by the installation of a new co-compliance sewage disposal system. Question is answered.
Questions answered.
Answered.
Question number five, describe how the requested variance is not a self-created difficulty. Request may be interpreted as self-created, however, all efforts were made to minimize relief sought. Question is answered.
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 Want any of the board members to have any other questions, concerns about the application?
No, we've got quite a bit of information here, which is good. Thank you. We usually ask for most of this, so this is good. But it's like a very complete packet.
I make a motion to accept area variance application two zero two two A V dash two Francis Keen, point four eight acres, twenty-three Lake Shore Road.
I'll second that.
Burgess?
Hi.
Rayo?
Hi.
Annie?
Hi.
Jamie?
I.
Matt?
I.
Just so we cover everything seeker, they're exempt from seeker section six seventeen point five C sixteen. Again, the referral to the county is going to be in progress. I had written not required, but we're going to put in progress instead. And we, we have a non-jurisdictional letter in, from A P A already in the file. That was provided.
Thank you. Motion to establish a public hearing for this variance on May twelfth at seven oh five P M.
A second.
Burgess?
I.
Rayo?
Yes.
Annie?
I.
Jamie?
I.
Matt?
I.
Okay, so, May twelfth at seven oh five.
Next item on the agenda is a decision on area variance two zero two one A V dash six Christopher and Carolyn Charland, one eighty-seven Potash Road, storage buildings placed with no permits and principal building.
If you want to do that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. Charland, are you present?
Thank you.
Right. Could you unmute yourself, please, Mrs. Charland?
Mrs. Charland, have you unmuted yourself? We're not hearing you yet. Can you hear me now? Yes, thank you. All right, can you hear us? Because we were getting black from yours.
Yes, I had to go to my cell phone.
Okay, thank you.
Just to summarize our previous actions, subsequent to the. Subsequent to the public hearing and review of the. Information provided, the Charlands, the tabled action on the, the variance. Uh, requested inf- additional information from the Charlands. Uh, regarding the design, a contractor, a timetable for construction. And a, when they were going to obtain a certificate of occupancy. Like to discuss that additional information which was provided. Take your packets out, please.
No, this is a new thought frame, this is the building that they want to put up. But.
What's that?
I forgot to make copies of these pictures, so I'm gonna pass those two down to you. Okay.
I will start. Um, this is Charland. Some questions on the information which you provided. Do you have a, you say you, you have a contractor for the work, uh, you are doing the work yourself, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, does that include any excavation work?
Yes.
Does that include installation of the septic system?
Yes.
Have you installed a septic system before?
Yes, I have.
You're also the contractor for all the concrete work?
Yes.
Are the current accessory structures being relocated?
No.
So. You currently have a well on the property, which is on the roadside of the smaller shed. And that well is being removed. Is that correct? And a new well is being put, put into a alternate location, which will then be a hundred and ten feet from the septic system?
It is a hundred and ten feet from the septic system, it will be.
Well, I'm confused about the drawings then, because. The. With me?
Where, where are my septic's going? The, the well is around a hundred to a hundred and ten feet away from it.
That's what the, what the drawing shows, but the, the drawing shows that the, uh. Most recently submitted drawing shows that the, uh, the well. Is behind the smaller, the ten by twelve accessory structure, and that well is in front of the accessory structure.
No, it's behind the second structure.
When Matt went up to the property, there's. Like a, um, standing faucet, I don't know what to call it. Coming out of the ground in front of those storage buildings, the we- is there, so is there underground piping from that? Faucet to the well?
Yes, that's my water, yes.
What is the concrete? Um. What, what is that concrete thing that's to the right of the storage building?
That's my, um, that's my, um, expansion tank.
Expansion tank for what?
For my water.
It's a concrete expansion tank?
My expansion tanks down in the ground, five feet. So it don't freeze.
So you have a drilled well, and that ties into that expansion tank, which is five feet underneath the concrete slab?
Yes.
Would it make sense to see he has a frost-free hydrant?
Yes, it's a frost-free hydrant, yes.
Our migrates going up and down. Drains underneath.
So the actual well structure is, it is a drilled well, which, which is. Located correctly as. Shown on the most recent sub-bill, and the structure which is in front of the storage shed is, is strictly. A, a structure for your expansion tank.
There's a dry well and a, or not a dry well, but a, a, it's a, um. A catch basin in the ground, five feet down, that's where my expansion tanks is, yes.
So is it a drilled well or it's not a drilled well?
It's a drilled well.
Mr. Charland, what's the current use of those accessory buildings?
It's for storage. We planned on building this house and, and we. Were just, we're gonna store materials in there while we build.
Are you storing a full bathroom in the smaller shed?
No.
Uh, what are the toilet, sink, shower in the smaller shed?
Yes, they are there.
Are they functional?
No, not right now, no.
Can I ask why they're there? They're not just stored, they're installed.
They were, um, we just planned on going up there to build the house and have some, you know. Spot. Um.
And where would, where would the, where would the, uh, the discharge from this facility go?
There's a, there was a dry well on the property when I bought it. There was a camper on the property when I bought it.
And dry well. So is this structure tied into that dry well?
Yes.
So it is a functioning operating bathroom then?
Yes.
He said no, so I'm confused.
It may not be large enough to be considered a house, but.
I don't have any additional questions, Jamie.
I don't even know where to start with additional questions. This. So evidently now you're saying that you do have a. A, a functional bathroom that goes into a dry well from a. Semi-drilled well.
We plan on putting a septic system in and I'm gonna tie it into there. Eventually, or I wish, it's just, it was temporary, just while we build the house. And, um.
Kind of confused here.
Connected.
Storage building and now it's a bathroom, so we're just trying to catch up here on what really is on that property. And what are you using it for currently?
Well, currently we, we want to build a home up there, so that's, that's why we're here, you know?
Do you have?
There was, there was, there was a camper and a dry well on the property when I bought it. And, um, we ended up putting electric on it. And, um. So, you know.
So this picture that you submitted of this proposed house you're going to do?
Yep.
Essentially, I just have a, a floor plan and a couple of elevations and a cross-section. Do you have a full set of plans in this yet, or is this all you have for this?
No, I wanna, I wanna make sure I'm approved before I spend all this money.
And what is your timeframe in construction of this, if this does get approved?
I'd start immediately and I'm gonna work on it all summer.
And this would be completed within that one year?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other question? Annie?
No.
Maybe just clarification before, the only thing is before, correct me if I'm wrong. Junior member, is the location or the. Outbuilds it currently has, you can't have, which is not a whole.
A primary structure.
Primary structure.
You need a primary before you have a secondary structure.
So. I don't care where his well is, I don't care where his septic is, all that's before us, just can't go stay there. Without.
Well, there's more to it than that, though, the, if, if you've read through your ordinance. In order for me to issue a permit for accessory structures, the. Principal building has to receive a certificate of occupancy within one year of the issuance of the permits for this. Storage structures.
He's asked.
So. He's asking. Correct, but. Well.
And right now we're not, he's not compliant.
Correct.
And we have the authority to say remove them.
Yes, you do.
I would not agree with Burgess, we are getting a little bit sidetracked, but it is all relevant information. In my opinion, these look like some really quick drawings for like a storage, maybe a big storage shed or a. They say one-story, two-car, eight-garage plan. These aren't even house drawings. These are garage drawings, aren't they?
As far as I can see, um, Mr. Charland, you, uh.
Yeah, it's, it's a, no, it's a little cottage, it's a, it's an Amish, it's an Amish building. I'm buying it from the Amish. I want to do something quick so I can get my, um, house up in a year.
And how, how do you, how long do you think it will take you to get the, your building permit from Warren County without any specifics in your, in your design?
Um. I'm not sure. That's why we're here.
No, your, your design is not there, there is no specification for installation, for windows, for bathroom facilities, for wiring, it is a shell.
I can get a set of plans in, in a week, I can have the, the original set of plans. It, within a month, I can have my set of plans ready. This is just preliminary, these are just to get started, just to see if you approve us.
That was not what was requested of you.
Well, I'm not gonna spend all this money on an architect and not be approved. Right, I can have, I can have the set of drawings. Very quickly done, the, the preliminary parts done.
It, I agree, it is, it is approval of the outbuildings. However, the principal structure must be completed in a C O within one year of, of us granting this variance. Based on the information which has been provided to me. I can't see any way that that is going to happen.
Let, let me. Let me.
And why, what is that?
Let me ask the attorney, um, if they. If they look at this to grant leaving the storage buildings without the principal building there, then I can issue the permit for the storage buildings. That sets the timeline for the one year from the issuance of those permits for the principal building to be done, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so if I issue that permit, let's say theoretically they approve leaving those buildings there. I'm able to issue the permit for those. As, let's just put a date out there of May first. And so then they have until May first of next year to have gotten the permit for the house, build it and get a C O. Then according to what's in our zoning ordinance, if they can't complete it within that year, they're in violation of our zoning ordinance. But they can ask for relief from the zoning board of appeals for another year extension, am I correct?
I, I don't know the particulars of what's in the ordinance, but. Your, you know, the overarching. Uh, theory is correct, that what they would be granting is not. Any sort of, uh, approval or blessing of the plans or, uh, any indication of whether you thought this was. Feasible. You're essentially. Um, allowing the, the two storage outbuildings.
I'll, I'll sum it up quick, if we grant a variance and the guy does not build the house, do we have any recourse?
You don't, Karen does.
Does Karen?
Yes.
So if, because it's terrible of us to ever push somebody away from a concern or deter them from building a house. The guys lied to us a few times, oh, well, we kind of have to move on from that. But if we do grant him the variance and he does not build the house. And he's all just like some bogus garage drawings, which they are. Karen, we don't have a recourse today here.
Correct. And then at that point in time, if the another, uh, application comes, and I guess Karen, that then. Would come to the board?
That's what I just read, if they don't complete it within that year, they have, they can appeal, do an appeal to the zoning board. For a one-year extension, it's the way that it's written.
And so at, at that point in time, if that, you know, if you get to that kind of hypothetical scenario where it hasn't been achieved. So we're, we're at the year mark, it then may come to you again for an extension, and at that point in time, you'd be able to see, okay, well. From the last year, what progress has been made. Um, is this actually feasible? Uh, have you taken steps? Um, or, um. Do we just sort of feel like we're chasing our tail on this and we're being, uh, strung along? And nothing's really happening and, and we're just in a position of having to grant one extension after another. So. Going back to your original question, yeah, within one year, you don't have a C O, Karen has the authority to take immediate action.
Okay. Yeah, right, right.
I just don't want to see somebody build it out for a year or two years and sell it to the next.
The way the ordinance is written, the maximum is two years, it's that one year, and then a one-year extension, doesn't go beyond that.
And that sticks with the property, not the owner, right?
Correct.
So the, the variance would run with the land, not the.
So everything we're doing is with the land. As well as the current owners.
If we were to approve this variance. And we are. Knowingly allowing the continued use of a substandard sanitary system on that property, where does that put the town? You, you're not approving any type of use of these structures or, or anything like that, so your. Uh, purview here is, is limited to. Uh, can the two. Called accessory structures, accessory structures. Remain. Without a primary structure. If there is some sort of use of those structures that might violate some other. Local, state, federal. Uh, ordinance, law. local, state, federal uh, ordinance, law, regulation, that's not for you to oversee or determine. So you're not um, blessing or allowing any particular use of those structures. You're saying they can be on that piece of property without a primary structure.
Okay, just let me ask Karen a question. As the CEO, I thought you were responsible for septic systems in the town.
I am. Was that dry well there when you bought the property?
Yes, it was.
There's nothing in my file where anyone ever obtained a permit for a septic system of, of any kind. Uh, do you know what it is? Is it a holding, is it a holding tank and a dry well? Is it a holding tank and a leach field? What is it?
It's a concrete holding tank, yeah.
So you have no, uh, just, so what do you do? Pump it?
Yeah, I guess. I, I haven't, I haven't really used it. I I just did this uh, last winter before then we shut it down and that was it. We haven't even used it, really.
Okay, um, just for your information, in order to install a septic system, you need to obtain a permit from town.
I understand that.
They all have dates on them. Most tanks have dates on them. But that's kinda off the subject. I mean, we're in the board of appeals. Now that you brought it up, made Karen aware of it, she will follow up with the county or the proper. So we can kinda get rid of that hurdle and move on to the next one.
So I guess we have to see, we wanna just approve, uh, conditionally approve this with the completion of their primary structure within one year from today.
Well, that's a requirement. We don't have to put that condition on it.
You just go to that same.
Yeah, okay. And that's a different matter. If you wanna, if, if you want to put on a, a condition that they can apply for an extension.
That's, I don't think that's what.
Like, this is twelve months. They don't need to apply for another variance or another, they don't need to keep milking it.
I mean, like you said, Matt, sometimes it does take more than a year to put up a, a primary residence. And, but, within a year, we're gonna see what is going on.
Some kind of progress.
Some kind of progress. Does be another year if he can apply. But if, if they haven't done anything in a year, I mean, they could apply again and within that year, but there's no further applications allowed. I'm thinking having the stipulation with the condition put on it that at least something has started in that first year is really necessary. Is that what you refer to, Jamie?
Well, it basically says, like Karen says it, in one year. And if it is not completed in one year, then he has to come back to the zoning board of appeals for an extension. And at that time, we'd have to evaluate if there, if any, or how much progress has happened on that property and then they've got a decision at that time.
Or, or they could remove the accessory structures.
Or yes, that's true, correct, okay.
So for our job, what's in front of us, you have a, a motion on the board, on the floor right now.
I have no motion.
I thought.
Oh, I didn't make a motion, I was just trying to clarify.
Um, is there any other concerns you have?
No.
And then I would make that motion that we approve this application, keeping the structures with the condition that within the year. Hmm, I'm going slow. So within the year, we see some progress before.
Please go for it, so act, application can, completely next.
All right, so we've got a motion to approve the variance to keep the structures and within one year, obtain the certificate of occupancy.
On the primary.
When it's approved, from.
I wonder about the county goes up there and like, that flags just because it's like a septic system.
They're not gonna look at the septic system, I'm looking at the septic system.
But that's not our issue with this.
They will go and look at these storage buildings and see if they meet code. Let me, where is that? Okay, twelve by twenty, so. The one building, the ten by twelve building is not gonna require anything from the county. Only that one twelve by twenty building. So the, the county will be inspecting that building. The county will be inspecting the construction of the principal building when that permit is issued. But the small, the other stor- small storage building only falls under my inspection for placement to meet zoning.
And that's where the bathroom is?
That's the one that contains the bathroom.
Okay.
So that's, that's in your category. But our category to approve this accessory structures up there until.
Until they, giving them one year to obtain their certificate of occupancy for the principal building.
Yeah, I'll second that.
So let's see, Annie, and who's seconded?
I did.
Okay, first.
No.
Rail?
No.
Annie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Matt?
Nay.
Hey, so they haven't approved it, so now they have to remove the storage buildings.
Correct. Right, uh, come into compliance with the zoning ordinance.
So they can't leave them until they have, until they have it, it, this is like a round robin. I can still issue them the permits for the storage buildings. And then they have the one year to complete the CO on the principal building, so.
I'm trying to do the right thing here and.
I, I, I'm trying to figure out what I'm doing that.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna build a primary residence, I'm gonna pay, everything's gonna be by code, it's, it's all gonna be expected and I just kinda did it kinda ass backwards here, and I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, fix my problem here.
So, attorney, they denied the variance.
Right.
So what, where, what is my position on this?
Uh, you would issue a, a notice of violation for whatever is out of code, because there has been no approval to.
I'd already done that, which is what started this.
Okay, um, and so now you proceed on notice of violation, and that's either to, and I don't know what it takes to come into compliance, that's removal of both, the removal of one or uh, in essence, whatever it will take to cure your notice of violation.
Isn't that removal of both?
Yeah, but if they say they were here and they removed them tonight and they came in my office tomorrow and got the permits for them, then they've got one year from that date of issuance to build, to get the house built and get a CO, so it kind of nullifies what you just did.
No, they, I mean, they can't get a, a permit for the accessory structure without a primary structure.
Without the. Let's read this. All accessory structures shall require a building permit to be issued prior to their initiation and a certificate of compliance upon their completion as elsewhere required in the code. Okay, where applicable, such permit shall be issued conditional upon satisfactory completion and issuance of a certificate of compliance for the prin- principal building or use to which it is accessory. If said six certificate of compliance is not issued within one year from the date of the issuance of the permit for the accessory structure or use, the conditions upon which said permit is issued shall be deemed not to have been complied with and the accessory structure or use shall be considered in violation of these regulations, except as application may be made to and considered by board of appeals, which board may for due cause shown authorize a one-year extension to allow for compliance with the conditions under which the permit was issued. Very convoluted. So if they came in my office today and applied for permits for the storage buildings.
So, no, because the, the storage buildings are there.
Correct.
The storage buildings would have to be removed.
Then apply for the permit.
That could start a, a new process. I don't know specifically if it would, or if this was essentially more or less setting precedent um, on this particular scenario. Um, but the first thing that has to happen is the violation has to be cured. You can't cure it just by um, creating a paperwork cycle.
Okay, so they need to remove the buildings.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Charlin, did you hear that, Mr. and Mrs. Charlin?
And then what?
And then apply for a permit to put them back on the property.
Okay, so what do I do? Just bring them across the road and park them over there and then apply for a permit and?
Or, or install a principal structure.
Okay.
We are gonna build a principal, we're, that's gonna be within the year.
We're ready to do this immediately. We, we gave you all this paperwork to start immediately. I can have these plans, like, soon, you know, sooner than later. I can have them quick and I'm ready to go. Why, why, why do I wanna waste the money to move the buildings when I'm gonna build a, a resident and put them back? Doesn't make sense. I might as well just take the, take them off the property and sell the property then.
That is your option.
Well, I don't want that option.
We do plan, we would like to build a house. We've always wanted to build a house. That's why we're doing this. We're just trying to do it the right way. Unfortunately, these plans say one-story two-car Cape garage plan. And that, it's a house.
It's gonna pass all the requirement codes and, and insulation, um, egress windows.
Well, that, that's the concern of the Warren County building codes when you get to them for that permit. My, my concern are setbacks and septic. But right now, my concern is, is they have denied your variance to keep those storage buildings there. So the option is, is to move them, get the permits for those storage buildings. I can issue them with the condition that the certificate for the principal building be issued within one year of the issuance of the permits for those storage buildings.
So what do I put to storage buildings in the meantime?
That is not our concern.
How's, was any precedent or is there any timeframe, you know, that they have to get so much?
Have to get the, the buildings removed.
Yeah.
No, they're, they're in violation now. Yeah, I don't know what, um.
It's writing in the codes, that state how long?
No, usually, usually when I send a violation letter, and there's gotta be one in this file. I give them two weeks, or usually two weeks to resolve the issue.
That will be our common practice.
Yep. I'm looking for the letter.
And in this case, within that timeframe, it made the application.
Right.
So I would say that obviously would toll any type of enforcement action.
Here's the letter. So, if they come in and get a permit for this principal building tomorrow. There isn't much sense in removing those buildings and putting them back. I hate to say that, but.
Right. You have to follow what the code says. And so.
We agree with Karen, but they had all the time in the world to present us with a good set of drawings or to convince us. This, what they gave us is a garage drawing.
I'm not arguing for you to pass the variance. You guys have denied the variance. Just trying to establish what my route is from this and to be able to tell the Charlins what they have to do. And right now, we're saying that those buildings have to be removed. They have to come get the permit for those buildings, which I can issue. I can place the buildings back on the property and get a permit for the house and with the intention of getting a certificate of occupancy within one year of the issuance, because that's a condition I have to write on that zoning compliance form. That the condition is that the CO for the principal building has to be issued within one year of the issuance of the permits for those storage structures. So, that's my path. They remove the buildings, they come in, they get the permits for the buildings. They can put them back on and meanwhile work on getting the permit for the structure, for the principal building. Would you agree with that?
I, I, I don't know what, what the code provision states, but um, what can occur is that the two accessory structures cannot remain on the property without a principal structure. And so they have to be removed. Otherwise, then what was the, the purpose of this application?
Karen, in answer to your question, since I have the code in front of me, you are correct. The, the, the first statement is that all accessory structures shall require a building use permit to be issued prior to their initiation.
Okay, so, Mr. and Mrs. Charlin, the path is to remove the buildings, come get a permit for the buildings. I will issue that permit for the buildings with the condition that the CO for the principal building be issued within one year of the date of the issuance of the search, of the compliance form for these accessory structures. Okay.
Old building is uh, completed first.
Or the principal building is completed first before you put those structures back.
Right.
Correct. In essence, what they're doing is making you remove those buildings until all necessary permits are in place.
Okay.
We're ready to get their permits now.
And how long do we have to remove the buildings?
Well.
Can we save it a step?
That I sent to you was dated November tenth, twenty twenty-one, which gave you two weeks to contact me regarding this violation. Failure to do so may force an enforcement action. If you do not feel you're in violation, please contact this office. I can be reached. So you did contact me and we came up. And we came up with that you would leave the buildings filed for a variance. And with no guarantee that you would get the variance and then. You were, your intention was to get the permit for the principal structure. So they've denied your variance. The buildings have to be removed until such time as I issue a. Compliance for those buildings. And the, the, again, the one bigger building, you're gonna have to go on and get a permit. For, from the Warren County construction permit. And then I can issue the permits for those buildings. You can bring them back onto the property if you choose to at that point, but then you have one year from that, that date to get the CO. For the principal building, apply for a permit for the principal building and get a certificate of occupancy for the principal building. Okay.
Um, sending out another notice of violation. Based on the fact that the variance wasn't approved. And it sounds like. Your initial two-week timeframe was for them to contact you to. Determine which path you were gonna go and so. I would think that uh you would have the, the precedent to rely on that then, now they have two weeks.
Two weeks to remove the building or to come into compliance, okay? Does that make more sense, Char- Mr. Charlin, to remove the building? Or come into compliance? Okay.
Now for the plans, um, being that we only had so many days to submit something. Um, I think it was like sixty-two days and everybody in the brothers' building, so. We had some, a architect draw these plans up and. What are you looking for on the next set?
Um, you'll have to contact the Warren County Building Codes Office for what they want for the construction plans. Um, for me, uh, again, what I do is approve setbacks and septic. And then you go to the county for the construction drawings and they will tell you what they need for. Energy code compliance, you know, um, structural stuff, whether, you know. Two-by-fours, two-by-eights with the spans that you've got going on. All of that is done through the Warren County Building Codes Office and I can provide you with a name and phone number. Um, tomorrow to con- of who to contact there to find out what they want for drawings.
Okay.
But for the storage building that is. The largest storage building that is already there, you should also ask them what they want for plans for that. That was a pre-manufactured building, I'm assuming, yes?
Yes.
Okay, you, you're gonna have to ask them what they want for drawings on that building because. It has to meet New York State Building Code as well. So when you talk to them about the principal building. Talk to them about what they want for plans for that storage building, because when I issue my compliance. I have to initial the plans that you submit to them so that they know. That I have seen what you actually are applying to them for. They want to know that the town has approved what you are saying you are putting there. So I'm, you have to have those plans for me when you apply for the permits from me.
Okay.
All right. Hey, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Moving on, the last item on the agenda is new and old business. Um, I don't have any old business. The only thing I had on new business was to invite Michael. Already, already all been introduced to him, so. The board meetings aren't always as exciting. Are they gonna have anything else?
Nope, I'm all set.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. I.
Hi.
I.